Your bus purchase? This is something that, you know, since the tax gap came into play in about 2012, we've worked hard to make sure that we have debt service aligned with building and transportation aid. And so you can see that in step four, we're subtracting 647,000. But in step eight, we're adding back the next year's, which is 645,000. So very, very close. And that's what we ultimately strive for. In step five, is that allowable growth factor? It's kept at 2%. This year it is 2%. And so we've come down to a maximum allowable levy limit of 12.7 million. So in order to have a positive vote, unless you had a super majority, you'd have to stay within the tax levy limit. And that yields $286,000 or 2.3%. And so if the district, and I'm not suggesting that you should or would, decided to go over that 2.3%, then you would need a super majority of 60% or more. And so that is the limit that is calculated for next year. And these are the components that had, you know, actually the numbers that go into coming up with that number. So that tax-based growth factor yields about almost $75,000. The 2% allowable growth factor is about 238,000. That capital levy, like I said, we try to keep that as even and constant as possible. It's about $1,300 decrease. And then the pilots, because when a new pilot comes on to, into the district, it basically says, you can't levy those taxes. You're going to give that benefit to the taxpayers. So you're ineligible for levying that. So it's a reduction of 25,000. And so if we go back the slide, that's what comprises that $286,000 or 2.3%. Now, I don't, I didn't, don't have like the executive budget proposal summarized for your district and not presenting that at this meeting. But I'm sure the superintendent has shared with you that you are receiving a minimum 3% increase in foundation aid. And so given the fact that you are in one of the 309 districts across New York State receiving the minimum, we would strongly recommend that you go out at your tax levy limit. It is the amount that's calculated. When it's lower, last year it was lower, it was more around 1.5%. And so we, I think it's important for us to note that they, these are funds that if you don't go out and ask for them now, they will be forever lost in the future. And I know, because I deal with all the districts across the region, that there are some districts that are getting 10, 15, 20% in foundation aid increases. And they're going to, they're going to probably go out at less than their tax levy limit and possibly even zero. And so I just mentioned that because that's going to make you look like, well, how come we're going out at 2.3 if someone else can go out at zero? And the reason is, you're in a different place. And with you just receiving that minimum increase, it's really important to keep that flow of revenue in and levy at the highest percent that that tax levy limit will allow you to do. At this point, I just open it up for questions. Why are we receiving the minimum? So based on the foundation aid formula, which is really the most heavily weighted factors in that formula are student enrollment and wealth. Your combined wealth ratio, which is a combination of income and property wealth, hasn't significantly changed. However, your enrollment has. And so over time, you went from them, the state owing you foundation aid to being overfunded. So if the calculation runs the way it's intended to run, you would be giving back foundation aid. And in order to get into the other position, you would have to have a very large influx of students to bring you up to that thing. The good news is, New York State has always approached foundation aid and aids as a safe harmless. So they haven't said, okay, we're just, now we're going to go to the foundation aid formula. And whatever it is, is what you get. They haven't taken that approach. They've always said, okay, we're looking to, you know, make sure that we get that fully funded for the districts that it's owed to. But any district that might be in a position such as yours, and I mentioned there are 308 other districts in New York State that are in the same position as you. They have said, we're going to, we're going to keep them whole and we're going to give them a little increase, which is what you've been getting over the past probably six or seven years when, when your formula kind of took a turn from them owing and you being a little overfunded. Great question. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, I think I'm tentatively scheduled for next month. If there's a topic that I'm assigned to provide to you, but so I look forward to seeing you next month. Just go to the next person there.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
And thanks for the segue, Kathy. Appreciate it. So next up, next up in my report, I want to welcome Tampa representatives from Tampa and SEI to present our capital project. It moves the mouse when you. With pictures too.
This is like serve up.
Yeah, when you bring pictures, that's a big deal.
Thanks, guys. Just want to give a quick update here. So we went through the whole redesign process, met with our facilities committee team. And we are currently at the state with our submission. Project was logged in December 20th. So the review time right now is six to eight weeks, 10 weeks. So we're expecting to get picked up any time now. However, I practiced that with quarter or five tonight, the engineers would pick up. So that review is started. We'll probably get a couple of comments that we'll address, send them back to the state. And hopefully get engineering sign off within the next couple of weeks. Architects, they'll probably pick up next week. So again, we'll fully anticipate some comments there. Same process, address them, send back to the state, and then hopefully get their approval. The one saving grace is the state has seen this project. So we've incorporated the comments that were from the original submission into this submission. So I think Tampa and SEI are positive and have a good outlook on it that comments shouldn't be too crazy. So that's a bonus. Once we have the engineering and the architects review, it's waiting on RPM. Jamie Byron is RPM. And I don't know if anyone has heard the rumblings up there, but they have two project managers for the entire state. And they have a project manager in training. So if anything is lagging behind, it's getting the final sign off from the project manager.
So what we will do, as soon as, you know, the architect email comes through, just like Mr. Burkhart received an engineering email tonight, we'll start reaching out to Jamie for that next little step. There's a couple of hurdles in there with her, but get it on her radar. Push that, push that along. So on timeline wise, we talked a week ago, I think it was about a week ago. I didn't project, we didn't project from our end, being picked up by engineering for at least another week and a half. So this is a good sign that things are moving. The other thing to factor in is that the federal projects are now starting to pile into SED. And those are under federal, so they're being prioritized. But I, it's very optimistic that we're receiving them right now. We were starting to think, yeah, towards the end of the month before we got picked up. So this is a good sign. The last little hurdle is the financial hurdle when it goes back to Jamie and the conversation about liability and things like that, which we'll work through when we get to that. But this is good. And I agree, I would think they've seen this. So this is not, they still would call it a full review, but it is not the same intensity as it is when you've never sent it there before.
So just, we'll do a little kind of reminder of what we're thinking exterior wise. I know the images are kind of small. But we do impact your hill. And within these couple of images, we're trying to get you guys to understand how much that hill is being impacted. I know it gets used currently, I'm looking at Dave Hogan. Football games, tennis courts, sporting events. It's steep. So with this new layout, with your pool coming out, we do have to encroach upon that hillside. However, the hillside is going to be more usable. We're doing kind of a tiered option where you're going to have an upper tier that's at your floor level. And then you're going to have another tier that's lower around five, six feet below that. So, and that lower tier is going to be, it's going to have a gentle slope to it. So if anything, it's a more usable hill. You're going to get more spectators in there than you are getting right now. So I think we solved a couple of issues for getting you a new pool. And we helped out with the spectator.
Can I be in it for a second? Yeah. Being new to this, I would just say, right through here, this is all, this is all flat, going to be flat viewable space now that's flattened out. So there's multiple levels of people, but instead of being on the side of a hill, that's all, this is all going to be areas that spectators can watch from. And it's elevated. So it's kind of like, we were joking when we walked it out, it's going to be kind of like box seating for certain people. And then there's this other level right here, this other box right here in the middle that's elevated a little bit above that, that is also viewable area. So we're actually creating more flat, viewable space to view events going on at the stadium.
And that, that lower retaining wall, obviously the whole back of the hill, we're looking at as a celebration, you know, this, we're thinking of as where you're going to hang all your state championship banners. You know, we can brand it if you want to brand it. So we're double dipping on the use of that retaining wall as well. So another positive, if you will. Still keeping, we still have our exterior toilet rooms that'll service the athletic events. You can see the plan of the pool. I know we haven't seen it in a while, but it's, everything's there. All your program items are there. More images, just rough, we'll find tunes. Once we get to where we're going to go to construction, we're going to do some actual photo realistic images that we're going to put on a board where we can put at the press box, we can put in the front lobby just so you guys can show the public what is going to be happening for the next two years.
The other, the other plan is that we'll do periodic dates for whether it be your website, social media. You'll have still pictures and of course for yourselves, as the coordinator says, you go through the progress of it. Something to point out there to the top, we're sort of doing the tenure line, that type of line. So that wall you're seeing right there is right next to your track. So what you're currently have a hill, which I know the kids will play on a little bit on the hill currently. But you really, when you come to watch a game, I know my family would see in the long across the top, you actually more than triple in that space down where you're able to stand. The area is flat and built up. So that roll down hill is now flat up to the building. That makes a little more sense. And then we'll address obviously the fall off down to the track. But this will, rather than walking down to the fence next to the track, if you're currently doing, everything is elevated up and then there's a marker. That gives you a little bit better look at what that looks like. The bottom one is your drive in, that's that circular drive. That's what your, you know, final finishes and things like that will be determined. But as you're driving in and turning and you're, you're coming to like a swim meet or you're coming to an event at that facility, you're driving in, dropping your child off right there. That right behind you is that concession stand, right behind you is your field. That gives you a visual of coming in that, that splits, very visible, obviously.
Question, the aesthetics. Will the materials be similar to the STEAM Academy? So it looks like it belongs rather than a separate cap, you know what I mean? Like, we want to look like one, right? Everything should kind of go together rather than.
Well, you know. You're not going to miss it.
No, you're not going to miss it. But I mean, as you can see from, when you're standing on the football field, you don't see that steam edition at all. When you do approach it though, in the bottom right corner, yes, you will see a steam edition. We've pulled the lighter, the whiter panel that you have on that steam edition is more of what you're going to see with the white on our building. And the block that you're seeing, the darker, lighter gray, if you will, that's going to be the same color, close to the color of the brick of your existing high school.
So it's kind of like tying both.
Yeah.
Yeah, taking elements from each.
You can all joke aside, the final, final finishes and things like that. I mean, there's obviously some in the drawings and things. We're going to have to interpret some of that and see what, what that's going to, that's what the pricing comes in, different things like that. So, you know, glass right now is extremely expensive. Some of the panels like you have on the STEAM Academy are, have yearly times on them right now. So there's some different things we're going to have to evaluate soon, obviously soon, because we're opening wide SED. But I don't want to change the structure, architecturally, aesthetically, what you're looking at. I think there's some flexibility with that. Addams in, but the way they've done it, it's, it's definitely going to stick. The height of it is going to make it really, it's a big building. So it's taller than.
But it'll still look like it belongs.
It belongs there. That is, that is, I mean, I'm not a drawer, but on their end, that's something we've pushed back on a little bit too, just to make sure it's not this, where you look like you have the campus under construction eight times and.
It's exactly what I'm trying to avoid.
And that's problematic for a lot of reasons, not just aesthetically. But so I think those final finishes, it gives your representation of the height, what it's going to look like. But we'll have to work through some of that.
Thank you.
You're also not getting, you know.
Let the volumes speak, you know, keep them simple. As we're going to do, we're still going to plan on doing the branding of your devil on that facade there. Fully anticipate that being backlit at night. So I think it's, it's going to, it's going to be a nice volume. And then just next steps, we do have Tampa did their constructability review of our, of our drawings. They were very good. So what that entailed was they went through every single drawing, coordinated between the trades, architects, mechanical, plumbing, structure. Very good comments. So in what that'll hopefully do is eliminate any chain orders that might pop up in the field. In all reality.
We'll have some.
We'll have some, yes. Because there's still going to be unforeseen conditions. It's just stuff you can't do. So.
It also, that process allows our team, not me, but our teams to have a real good idea of the expectations of build as far as what they're looking to build. It helps the procurement process. It helps all those pieces. So it, it took some time, but I think that's, I think comments, those adjustments have been made. Some of which SED might make some of the same comments that we made. But and we also looked at trying to, to your point, like finishes. That's where obviously there's money, there's a lot of money in that type of thing. What's, what's lead times on some items potentially? And this is a longer build, so lead times aren't scary. But asphalt prices, prices, wall prices, block prices, all of that is being updated in our office pretty regularly. And at least on that side. And then internal, we've got a pool builder, two different pool builders that have already looked at it. So we have some basis, not bids by any means, but we have basis of design costs, square footage costs, and recommendations from them as far as potential options to consider. They have no impact on the pool, just how it's built. But you would never know. What's underneath that tile, you, you just want it to be perfect, obviously. So if there's a different way, that might be a little cost effective. Did the same thing with any type of environmental things too, such as pavement.
So just in our comments, as I said, SED comments, they'll be coming in. So we'll address those and then just continue the coordination with Tampa as far as getting the documentation to go. And then we've talked internally about how we plan on procuring this. You know, maybe we'll go down the cooperative purchasing route for some, for some of the, but then price issue, some of the, for your standards, send out the bid and get the pricing back.
So procurement wise, right now, we're still a little premature to give you a full presentation on, on the procurement process just because I'm not super comfortable with, until SED makes those final comments and kind of stamps. And then you'll see us talk in more detail with you. But I've explored state contracts, some national contracts, some statewide cooperative contracts, some of the bidding climate out there. We have had, you did have, if you saw Rodney this morning, there were a couple of contractors with Aaron taking a look at, so there's some demo involved, there's some, some pavement that's involved. Different things on the exterior of the building. We've started that process. We've started site fencing, site locations, like where some of that's going to be. We'll finalize that with Mr. Burkhart, make sure we're not impacting spring. But from a procurement standpoint, we kind of have a bunch of options on the table. I've reached out to several, from flooring to terrazzo to at least start to get a feel for what we're looking at at cost. Costs are like a moving target right now. It's just, we do, it has settled down a little bit, a little bit anyway. But we are still keeping an eye on that. And then we'll come back with some recommendations on, you know, this, this would be perfect for a cooperative type purchase. This is certainly a bid. This is certainly, so how we can be competitive, but look at your total, your total budget numbers and the best way to do that. We're not really loving any one process. We do think effective projects right now use all, most if not all processes. And we've spent last two and a half years pretty much doing, doing this, all these processes. So construction schedule wise, we're still, we still plan on, there is, everything keeps moving ahead as, as expected. And again, with this positive news today, there will be activity over the end of break for sure at this time, even if it's site fencing, the start of, the start of some areas, which means we're, say we're in February, it's very, potentially that March meeting could be somewhere where you're starting to see contracts, potentially even awarding contracts to get started work. So once you enter that phase, you're officially in, in whole constructions. We are already have procured on our end, we're just waiting for final dates, obviously. The job trailer that we will provide out, out there, that'll minimize people in the building for safety reasons right now. Most job meetings, things like that will happen at the exterior of the building. We just go for the length of time that we're working with you. We love you and it'd be great to be in here. But the reality is, we don't really want all those contractors in the building right now. For obvious reasons, whether it be COVID, whether it be other, other things. Not to mention, most work is outside. We're outside putting walls up and we're kind of behind it. So there's no reason to walk it inside. So construction schedule, we're right where we were when we reported this, for our before, which is at April, or April, right? And then it will go straight through, it'll be very busy in here, almost two, almost two years altogether. So we have some milestone dates, which we'll be happy to share with you. But I really, I really don't want to go on the record with a date until I have an SED approval date. And then we have an award date and then Aaron will be here with me. And we will, we'll set some milestone dates for accountability purposes for all this and where we're at and how we're going to write the contracts and things like. We've started on the front ends, one last piece to it, maybe a little too technical, but on the front ends, reviewing the front ends of documents, which sets the terms and conditions for contractors to work in. We've reviewed those, made some suggestions back then as well. And of course, those will be included as expectations. There's obvious things like bonds and things like that, but there's other things about timelines that they have to stay to. So yeah, it's very busy, very, very busy. And we're, we're planning on April. Everything keeps moving.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you guys, yeah.
Does anyone have any questions?
All right, my next report, getting towards the end is, well, actually, I'm going to switch things up because I'm going to give Aaron a little time to get my next presentation up. And I'm going to go to Lori to talk about our master teachers.
So we just wanted to let the board of education know that we want to recognize three of our Schenandoah Forks teachers tonight as they are New York State master teachers. And they are part of the state, which is part of the state university of New York's master teacher program. The master teacher program began in 2013. Partnership between the New York State Education Department, University of New York and Math for America. And the goal is, is to have greater STEM education. Teachers that are in this program have three domains that they focus in on. The first is strengthening their knowledge of STEM. The second is having a deep understanding of pedagogy. And the third is working and under, working with and understanding their students, the community, their families. The master teacher program is, is extremely competitive. It's an application process. You have to have recommendations, you have to write a statement about yourself. You have to take a test too as well. So we're very proud of our three teachers. It's a huge accomplishment. Our first goes out to Nicole Hanch. Nicole Hanch is an eighth grade physical science teacher at Schenandoah Forks Middle School. Nicole was nominated or was inducted or whatever into the master teacher program in 2019. But we wanted to recognize her tonight because she, I'm more certain that she'll be helping our two new master teachers that have been awarded this in 2021, 22. Our two newest, the first is Mike Ramston. Mike Ramston is a technology teacher at Schenandoah Forks Middle School. As I mentioned, he's been inducted for the, the school year. And our final, our third one is Sarah Wacowski, who's a high school math teacher at Schenandoah Forks High School. She was also inducted into the master teacher program. And we wanted to recognize them because we're very proud of their accomplishments. And so that's why Mr. Burkhart wanted us to mention it tonight.
It's a very tough, it's a very arduous application and, and interview process. So that's a great, great feather in their cap.
I sat in on two days of interviews as a master teacher interviewing. And they are the hardest interviews that I've conducted. It was really impressive to be a part of the process. I didn't obviously see these folks, but Kathy Hopel did put out a statement, maybe we can put that on the, on the website.
Yeah.
Because the rigor involved in that is intense. And it is very impressive and very competitive. It's no joke. Congratulations to them.
Very well deserved, yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you. All right, the last presentation I have is our COVID update. There's not a ton to, of specific information update, but I figured I'd just give a snapshot of where we're at. So this is a quick review of our last board meeting. I reported out on, in January, coming back from Rake, where our cases were at. And we had 56 positive cases in the elementary, focused on students for this because as you'll see, we don't really, we're not really directly tracking staff with the change in protocols that happened last month. So we had 56 positive cases in the elementary, 42 in the middle school, 29 in the high school for a total of 127. We went back a few weeks. This isn't the exact, this isn't day for day, the exact amount of time, but it's a similar snapshot in time, more recent. And if you look at our recent cases, we've had 10 cases in the elementary, six case, positive cases reported in the middle school, three positive cases reported in the high school for a total of 19. So at this point, you see that, you know, we're, we're tracking across with the state and the county. There's been a drastic reduction in the number of positive cases that we're reporting. So one small update is just something that we put on our website from the health department is just some guidance on what to do in different situations now with some updates. If you are, if you're exposed, and also there's a chart here for, I'm not going to go through every situation because they also include a flow chart with it. And it's like playing the game Candy Land and you can get lost really easily. So I'm just going to, I'll just put this up there, just let you know it is available on our website. And it does cover every possibility of exposure through testing positive, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, if you're symptomatic and exposed or not symptomatic and exposed, what you should do. And again, these are just guidance pieces for, for resources for our families and our staff. So just wanted to put that up there and some of those things are updated. One update of note, I guess, one of the most significant changes that we saw is in terms of test to stay, we had requested our, our district, myself on the COVID task force team, as well as Maureen Wall and a few neighboring districts, we put a request in the state to consider. We put a request in the state to consider our after-school activities as well as our, our, uh, during the school day. Um, in classroom to consider them together because we consider co-curricular activities as part of their activities that they do during the day and if they're testing to stay. We would like them to be able to participate, so they did take that into advisement, we're happy to see that. Um, in those situations, they are allowed, they did allow students to uh, participate in practices, uh, just not away games or interactive games with other schools, so. Um, we, you know, it's not where we wanted to be, but we thought it was a movement in the right direction in that case, so. Um, this is just an update letter to families and staff, I just wanted to kind of touch on that too, that went out earlier this week. And uh, as you know that we, the mask mandate for, for public businesses uh, did expire this week and I just wanted to refresh. Uh, and make clear to everybody that, that unfortunately does not, uh, or fortunately, depending on what side of the fence you're on, doesn't include schools. Uh, but we have, uh, we did get some, some indication from the governor and we requested this through our Niscus. Uh, which is the New, New York State Council of Schools superintendent sent a letter to, to uh, Governor Hokel looking for some specific guidance in direction on what she's looking for. And we call it a pathway to normalcy, how are we going to transition back to, you know, relieving some of these things that are, you know, that our families are very stressed about and our teachers and our, and our students, so. Um, so she did give a response on some of the things she's, she's going to be looking at and she did give us a general timeline, we're hoping for some more specifics. And I did indicate that with our, uh, with our families that when we get more specifics, uh, key date will be, I mean, oh, this kind of a, uh. This kind of escapes us at living in upstate New York, this is, this is more of a downstate New York thing. Uh, she said February break, we don't really have a February break, we have, uh, we have President's Day off and the Friday before, but they, uh. Uh, they, a lot of the downstate schools have that entire week off, so she wanted to look at the cases when we come back and the positivity rates. Uh, look at these different factors, hospitalizations, pediatric hospitalization specifically, and looking at those rates. That she would then determine, working with the health department, when, if, if and when masks would, would be um, able to be optional in school. So once that happens, uh, we'll be, we'll be updating stakeholders on that. So, um, that's just my uh, quick update for Co- for our COVID update, I don't know if there's any questions from the board. On anything in that regard, I know that there's a few letters that we wanted to share in the, in the um. Email section, so, and, and there might be some discussion on that, so we'll wait for that, okay? All right, and I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, two point two principles report.
Um, so this month, this, this week actually is National Counselor, I think it's a week. So we really, Kevin and I really wanted to give a shout out to our people personnel team, so that involves, that includes job helps, who's a psychologist. Debbie Mutler, our social worker, Laura Nganda, our positive behavior interventionist. And then Clara Tanner, our new school counselor, so definitely school counselor, but we include them all. Um, they're an amazing team, they work tirelessly to support students, staff, families. They work really collaboratively with all stakeholders and they are a lifeline in our school. So I just wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the great things that they're doing. Stephanie and Joel are entering into round two of their yoga and mindfulness session. So this summer they got certified in little flower yoga, um, as instructors, and so they are, session or round one went wonderful, so they're really excited to put on two. Clara, our newest team member, has jumped right in, like she's always been there, which has been wonderful, she's been part of our team. And um, she is doing classroom lessons, running attendance groups, and also meeting with small groups and individual students as needed. And then Laura Lynn, she just continues to help teachers and staff implement positive behavior interventions in the classroom. Um, for all students, but then she also does some social skills, social skills, skill groups. And works with our students one-on-one to build positive behaviors. In addition, she also heads up our character education committee and keeps character education going all year round, so. They're an amazing team of women and we just want to say thank you to them for all that they do every day.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, in the middle school, um, high school, we just finished up the first semester of the school year, so thanks to all of our students and staff for all their hard work. Um, just wanted to give a, you know, a little shout out to our middle school teachers, um, you know, some of you have had children built through our middle school, but they really take a lot of time to write personalized comments. Um, on all of their students, um, and, and they don't have to do that, so I really appreciate their time and effort with that. Um, this school year, we also started a semester-long scheme elective, um, with Mr. Pace teaching that class. Um, first time we've ever offered an elective in our middle school and it was for eighth grade students only. Um, and in this class, students did some metalworking projects, so they created some rings and some pennants. Um, they did some electro plating, some instrument belt construction, um, and some custom key fabrication for, for instruments. Um, we also got a drum set donated to our school and then they restored that drum set and it's usable by our band department now, which is pretty cool. Um, they did some woodworking aspects in this class too, um, and they built wooden ukuleles. Um, and some of the examples that students of their project can be found in our student activity area, um, in the showcase, so it's something we're looking to continue to do. We got a new crop of students for the second semester, um, and we're hopeful we're going to be able to offer that again next year, so. Um, thank you to Mr. Pace for all of his efforts with this class. We're also looking to offer another elective next year, agricultural, agricultural elective to seventh and eighth graders if they choose to take it. Um, this will be a semester-long class as well, taught by Nicole Hanch. Um, I just wanted to thank Nicole and Lori for all their time, uh, to get a grant, um, for funds to start this class up. So that should be awesome for our seventh and eighth graders as well. And then lastly, shout out to our school counselors as well, they work hard, our whole P P S team. Um, this past week, we just, as a group, did I think thirty phone parent conferences with students that are struggling, um, in our middle school. Just to try to work a plan together with families to support their, their child and get them on a better positive track. Um, and they were a big part of that. Um, so they're also starting a scheduled process for next school year already and also with February, but it is a long time, it takes a long time to do that, so. We will be sending out letters and they're going to actually post informational videos for families to watch on their own. And then they can set up a personal, a, a meeting if they want to, and that, that'll be coming out in the next couple of weeks, so that's it.
Very good, thank you.
Same on St. Pete's here with the high school, also want to recognize our, uh, school counselors for all that they do. So we have George Wright, who does ten through twelfth grade as a case hold, uh, Gabby Bennett, ten through twelfth grade as well. Haley Van Oaken, who we share, actually was in middle school, but she worked, she's with our ninth graders. Also had Beth Sheen, who's a school psychologist, and just this year we added Shane Baron as an academic counselor through the partnership, so. Just want to thank all of them for their, for their hard work and dedication to their craft. Um, for those who don't know, they, they work to really maximize student success, promoting access and equity for all of our students. Um, among many skills and supports they offer, they also apply a lot of the academic achievement strategies and supports there. Uh, and this one's a big one, working on social emotional needs and developing those interpersonal skills with our students, especially as we've worked through the pandemic, we noticed that he's meaning that as everyone else. Uh, and then planning for post-secondary options like higher education, military workforce, um, so thank you to them for all of what they do for that. Um, continuing on that thread though, uh, the thank yous don't stop. Uh, end of the second quarter and the first semester went well, like we said. Um, and, and really part of that, and a big reason for that are our counselors. Uh, we had many happy electives that finished off and that can get a little chaotic with the uh, final grades coming in and the final projects and also the finals. But grade reporting, report cards, et cetera, we've had a great transition in the new semester and much of that wouldn't have happened or would have been so smooth without their hard work and their efforts from our counselors. Um, they've also been working hard for preparing the schedule for next year, we're already starting that. And what they do is it's a collaborative effort and they're determining what courses will be offered, creating a booklet, so that way the students can see what's going to be offered, getting into classrooms, working with those students. Um, and then eventually seeing them individually to help schedule for next year. Um, so thank you again to our counselors and for all their, you know, support for our student success.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to two point three board report. Um, let's see, emails, so we received. Couple of emails on the incident, Superintendent Burkhart had already addressed that, so I just want to acknowledge we did receive those emails. And we received a handful on um, dress code related, so. With that said, um, I think it might be a good idea just to. Talk about the dress code and what we'd like to do moving forward.
I know there's a policy in place that we need to kind of revisit and we have a, a, a very strong, clear calendar on how we're going to revisit those, so potentially that's, I don't think it's. I think it's going to be a couple, a year or so, I'll be, who would actually hit that section, so potentially I would bring it more to the front of the group. Um, just so that we can be more. And our policy review team, and I know that that could be brought forward. Um, rather than going in numerical order as it was kind of laid out in numerical order or policy number order. Um, so we can move, move that forward for sure, especially even to put the forefront of the, um, community, I think that's. Something we should certainly do, I would love to include, um, students on that team, I think that would be really fun when we do a review. I know sometimes we bring in other people when we do policy review, but I think that would be a. Opportunity.
The dress code, um, many that. Created that, were parents, community members, students, teachers, and um, et cetera, so it, it hit everybody.
Yeah, sure, I think, yeah, coming out of, coming out of COVID and just with, you know, different, different demographics and things changing, it might be good to revisit this. And I, you know, looking at the different, uh, talking to the different superintendents and some of the different districts, there, they are, there's a lot of districts are, are seeing that as well, so we're revisiting that. Certainly don't want it to be a barrier for students to come to school, but we want it to be safe and, and, you know, uh, a safe, a safe environment as well, so. What I, what I could do is, uh, if, if you would, if it's your wish, I was, could take the lead and facilitate some activities at the different, at the different levels. Elementary, middle school and high school to get feedback from staff, students and uh, families, uh, on that and would, I would certainly be able to report that out to you at a, at a future date. Yes.
It's very different at each level, you can't just.
Right, right, yeah, I think we got to approach it, yeah, I agree, approach it at different levels, yep. Absolutely, thank you, yeah, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Mike?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to talk about the, um, I know we, there's the lawsuit there going on with the school, the mask mandate down in Nassau County, Long Island there. And there's been a lot of letters circulating around about, you know, support of that and also other schools sending letters to Governor Hokel. Um, trying to end the school mask mandate and the one I saw that some people have shared with me is from Warwick, uh, Central School District and. It just, it's just a letter to Governor Hokel saying that she, you know, hopeful that you end this as soon as possible, that, you know, the time has come. It's something I think we should consider doing, I think it's a good idea and I'm strongly in favor of it, I just not sure what you guys think of it, so, so I wanted to bring it for you guys and. It's, I guess it would be nice, you know, it could be a moot point in two weeks, but, you know, who has, we have no clue, but. Um, even so, it might be nice to have others, school district from upstate New York sending letters to Governor Hokel to see it's not just downstate and. Um, that's something I think we should consider, so. I throw it out to you guys to see what you think about having Amy write a letter on behalf of the school board.
Okay.
Well, you are the president.
One of the things I like about the letter is it maintains choice, I think we need to articulate.
Right, I think it needs to go back to parents.
Goes back to the parents and if the parents go, if they want their children to maintain the masks, I think that that parent choice is important. And uh, and respect, respected because we are in a division, whichever side of the fence you're on. Um, so I think the parent choice is important, however, I do also agree, I think the time has come, especially if she's going to review it on. In March, that means that she could review against it and with only, I think the statistics came out regarding young children under eighteen and. The, the percentages are mainly comparatively, so. And we are having every single staff member who wants to be vaccinated, double vaccinated and boosted, we provided opportunities for that. I think any adult, any child over five, if the families want them vaccinated, they've allowed that, and I think. I like the choice option that's included in that war with letter.
I strongly think we ought to do it, um, for many reasons, but I just sit here and watch the struggling of the students and the teachers trying to do their best. It's time, it needs to be done and hopefully we'll get some there.
Mike?
Yeah. Follow it.
Okay. Absolutely, you all know where I stand and certainly emphasizing, um, parent choice is, is the ball.
Yes.
So I'm here and I don't know if we need a, a resolution, but uh, I know everybody has weighed in, but we would, uh, we do have, it's not a policy, but we do have as part of our re-entry plan. That masks are mandated, if you, if you would like us to, what we could do is we could amend that, so when the, when the state deems that we are able to make it optional, we would make. Man, we can make mask wearing optional part of our, uh, we could adjust our, or re, you know, adopt or adapt our, our re-entry plan to reflect that, so that. Um, otherwise, I, you know, I feel like it, it wasn't clear as far as, uh, what we looked at with the, with board, would, how boards operate with, uh, with a re-entry plan. If it's not a policy, but they did recommend, uh, through legal that we, that we, um, that we do have some sort of board action to make sure where we're, that, that tell the community where we stand on that, so.
Gotcha.
So are we creating that resolution right now or have?
The letter, you.
Well, the letter is just something we don't need a resolution for, we can just send the letter.
Right.
Cause we're in agreement, but to amend the.
We would either have to do it at the next meeting or.
Well.
If it comes out before, do a special meeting, right?
March tenth is the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, if we could do it now, we might want to.
I'm fine doing it now, it's probably a good idea, at least it's there, I mean, it's just, we draft a resolution where it's, you know, if it does come out, then we have that, we can do that.
A resolution to amend the re-entry plan.
So instead of having a meeting, maybe then we can just, the resolution's already done, so if it does get.
So we will make a three point two new business for that, does, does that make sense? Okay, so. We'll continue with our board report and then we will. All right, very good, um, building liaison, so that was a, a subject and I'm not sure building liaison is an actual term, but more of a concept, something that was discussed at one point. It would be, it was, um, I don't know, I'll say that, to kind of bring the building leaders and the board together. So I want to open that up for discussion and see if that is something our board is interested in doing or not. So just to elaborate a little bit, other, some other districts have done it where they designate a board member or two to each building. And they meet with that building leader on a regular basis, it could be monthly, it could be biannually, it's whatever is mutually agreed upon. Would anyone like to begin that discussion?
Well, I would just say the, um, admin, you know, cause we talked about working together, it's very important to us to do that. But also, you need to know, it's a new day ahead right now.
Okay.
And if they do, definitely we'll work together with them, but if not. This, this time comes a figure.
I, I would love to have building liaison. I think, I mean, I don't know how the admin feels, but I think it would be beneficial.
Okay.
Have open communication.
Yeah, I echo what Mary said, that's, what you said was very good, Mary, you know, if they want us, absolutely. If they need us.
I mean, other policies, I know on board or one of the things from. The state, they said that a lot of schools, uh, boards go to different schools, like one month their meeting will be at the elementary and another one at the middle school, et cetera. So that the board is getting into the building and seeing what they've done and what's going on, but again, I would say it's up to what would help the administrators.
Kristen, do you have anything?
I, I disagree, I, 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 I just agree, not disagree, I agree, I think liaison is, is, if that's what they would love, I, I think it would be great. I think, you know, as board members, we're here to, we're here to. I think, you know, as board members, we're here to, we're here to listen. And I feel like, you know, when we're here, we hear our constituents loudly. You know, um, we hear reports, but that con- that communication that we're here for. Staff and faculty, community and teachers and, and everybody. It just, it puts that touch in there. And I think if we, we were welcomed, I would love it. I don't want to put another, I don't want to put anything else on these staff. I don't, the administrators, like if this is another meeting for them, it's, you know, I don't, I don't want to see that.
Well, and it's not a show and tell.
Right. It's a, it's a relationship. And I think our roles and, our roles and responsibilities should be articulated as well. So they're, they know that that's what we're here for. That's my opinion.
Or maybe that's something like we can sit down and like articulate what our, what the roles would be if we do this and then, you know, get their input and start with something next year or something.
We can, you know, and that's when we have these dialogues, we can say, well, you know, and we were talking over there, this is some of the things I noticed. And it, it's giving a voice sometimes. And more conversation, understanding. Cause we don't know, you know, we don't know, you know, we don't know.
So do we want to, next step, establish interest first before, how, how do you want, what's our next step?
I would say, yeah.
So if there isn't interest from the administration, then we're not going to do it.
Right.
Is that correct?
Executive session, would we do that at an executive session when we can just talk to them?
You want to do that at like a future meeting?
Yeah, we want to do it at a later meeting, but yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we could talk about what it's going to look like and how we think it would work.
That would be a workshop. That would be a workshop, not executive. But yes, we could do that. Yeah.
Whatever you call it.
Yeah. Okay, all right, very good. And the last thing I have is um. Okay, the district safety team met on February first for the first time since October twenty twenty. So I want to thank Superintendent Burkhart and our safety team for realizing the importance of district safety and getting us back on track with regular meetings. Agenda items included the discussion of tabletop exercise for the admin team. Most schools do these. Basically, we come up with a scenario in the district. For example, an example that was used was a train derailment. Uh, the admin team goes through the scenario and works through the action plan. Tim Gilbert from Boce's works with us on our plans and would be here for the exercises. The exercise would potentially be held twice a year with everyone clear on their role and execution. In the past, Dave Berdick would do them roughly once per month. Lockdown drills. We discussed when to notify and when to conduct. We have done two of the four so far this year. It used to be that faculty would be notified for two and would be without notification for two. However, since COVID, all drills have been notified. It was determined that we need a drill during pastime. It's been noted that students react differently when no notification is given. Evacuation sites. Prior to COVID, we had a great plan in place with having CB as an evacuation site. And we're not sure if we have to go over there again because we still have the plans. We are looking into other sites such as nearby churches. Of concern, however, is the flow of traffic and the sound reunification plan. I love you guys. Introduced to us by Jason Hibbert. The I Love You Guys Foundation offers programs for crisis response and post-crisis reunification. Jason and Hannah attended the training. Some topics include active shooter refresher with faculty, lockout. Lockdown, which can be confusing due to the similarity in the language. Strategic placement of stickers in the classrooms to signify line of sight from the doorway window. Uh, CF stickers, I believe are being ordered for that purpose. So basically that would mean it would be placed in the room where if looking through the, um, the door's window. It's, it's placed where you can see, right? So they would have.
They keep the kids beyond that stick, behind that sticker, they're not going to be viewable from the, from the windows.
Uh, tip line. Students and parents will have the opportunity to report information, tips on issues or concerns. This will be available when the new app comes out. Maggie Gilroy will be on the receiving end and then it is forwarded to the proper admin. Mr. Borschard and Mr. Connors will be included if the issue is serious. District radios. Okay, there was a little update since I wrote this, so forgive me. Yeah, just to that.
Out of the process, very.
Uh, many of our radios are old and outdated and some have charging issues. Uh, we have new radios on order and the, and then let's see. With the new radios, there will be the option to shut down certain frequencies in the event of an emergency, eliminating cross talk. We did discuss what would happen in the event of multiple emergencies such as clearing the line, code words, et cetera. This is being looked at closer by Mr. Borschard and Mr. Hibbert. Okay, so we, let's see here. Our new antenna.
So we presently with our, with our buses, we have a, a normal dispatch system with radios in the buses. And they work uh, as well as, as they can. They're uh, the range on them isn't, isn't that far and there isn't a direct communication with the school. So the new system that we're going to is a digital system that is uh, more state of the art. We did just get the antenna, antenna hooked up and there's repeaters that are located within the district at different areas. That also repeat that signal and send it back. So it's actually the same one that emergency, the antenna that we hooked up is uh, on the same line as some of the emergency. Local emergency uh, response stations are hooked up too. So once we get that set up, that will change and upgrade our system to where we'll be able to directly communicate with buses. It, buses and also our bus communication will be a much farther. So pretty much anywhere. I mean, if we have a bus, we have a bus. We do have a bus that goes out to Harpersville and we'll be able to communicate by radio with that bus, the entire, for, for, for the other, the entire trip, which is, which would be very valuable. Um, so part of that, so we've gotten the antenna hooked up. We do have the repeaters that are in and we're in the process of installing them. What we need to do is upgrade the uh, update the uh, reprogram the existing radios that administration has. And then we need to, uh, we would need to upgrade uh, some of the radios on the buses to get them up to that capability. So. But exciting stuff. We're moving, we're moving in the right direction there.
Okay, so Narcan, Narcan and drug tests. Uh, the district is looking into obtaining Narcan as it was discovered that. Uh, we currently don't have any. Uh, we now have drug testing kits. Now listen very carefully to the next part. Let me be very clear. These kits are to test substances and are, that are found and not for testing students. Make that very clear. It's just testing substances. They are very easy to use and will be administered by our SROs. Once again, not testing kids, just testing drugs. Okay. Yes, unknown substances.
Like the potential drugs.
That's right. Well, there was a little confusion in our meeting, so and there's a number of us confused, so I wanted to make that clear. All right. Uh, district security and safety concerns include. Um, the direction that has been given by the state for the elementary level is to keep them in their seats during drills. Rather than have them gather out of sight of the window. This was to keep them separated due to COVID. This method is of concern and it is believed that the kids should practice it the way it would be done in an actual event. So they have a conditional response. Free K, K and first grade have not done this fully. So the next drill will be hybrid and the following will be unannounced. There is a level of anxiety that certain faculty and staff have about unannounced drills that will be considered. It has been decided that the word drill must be added to the announcement when lockdown drill is initiated. Potential obstacles for pastime drills include speakers, sound of the announcement, pastime noise levels. Discussion of possibly utilizing certain tones that will grab attention to listen to the announcement. One example that was used is, um, I'm sure you've all heard when your cell phone, everyone's cell phone goes off for an amber alert, something like that. It's a very specific tone, but perhaps utilizing something like that, that will let people know, be quiet and listen. Uh, there was a concern about the PA system not working properly in various areas of the buildings. Since our meeting, building principals have checked all speakers in their building to determine which speakers need adjustment. John Silvanic will address this with Dana, the speaker of Google. A question arose of what to do if the parents smell of marijuana at parent pickup. Can they drive their child safely? What are the rules and the laws? Chris Connors called a deputy to learn that special officers have to be called in to do the marijuana field sobriety tests. If the parents are questionable, the next step is to call the SROs so they can make a determination. As to whether or not the child should get into the vehicle. If there is actual smoke coming out of the car, it is a bigger situation. And that is all I have for my report. Our next meeting will be just after spring break, the first week of April. I'm sorry, not the first week, the week of April eighteenth. All right, um, does any other board member have anything?
I know the technology, where you rescheduled, I was not able to attend. So I know that Tom gave me some good.
Oh yeah, we do have a good news. Uh, the uh, our, our first shipment of Promethean boards, we just found out this, late this afternoon are shipped. They're on their way, so we're expecting them in the next few weeks. So we're going to start installing them and we are on pace to upgrade all of our classrooms in the district. Uh, K twelve with uh, will have Promethean boards by the end of the school year. Yes, okay, right here.
Very good. All right, three point one. Oh, thank you.
Public machine to speak to the Board of Education will be allowed this period of time to do so under the following guidelines. Speakers will be limited to a maximum of three minutes and the entire public comment session to a maximum of thirty minutes. Speakers are requested to stand, state their name and topic. Speakers will not be allowed to personally attack any board member, administrator, or any of the public present. Also, no comment by the speakers will be permitted that deal with executive session subjects such as individual personnel matters. Discipline issues pertaining to specific individuals, including students, and speakers will not be allowed to read letters.
Eric Daniels for the dress code. Well, thank you. All right. Is there any other, uh, very good. Three point one, field trips. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the physics field trip to Hershey Park as attached. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Mike. Discussion.
Amy O'Brien, Mary Collins, Mike Favreau, Lynn Lockwood, and Christine Webb.
Motion passed. Perfect. Okay.
Trying to cover.
All right, three point two. Upon recommendation of the superintendent. A resolution to amend the Shenango Forks reentry plan to allow for optional mask use when the New York State mask mandate for schools expires. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Mary. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien, Mary Collins, Mike Favreau, Lynn Lockwood, and Christine Webb.
Motion passed. Okay, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve four point one through four point five as attached. Is that Lynn? Thank you, Lynn. Discussion. I just want to uh, recognize Lex Aston. Um, she is resigning. And she is going to be missed. Uh, I want to speak to her directly if she's listening. Um, although you will be very, very much missed. You will never regret putting family first. So thank you so much for your time with us. Okay, uh, roll call.
Amy O'Brien, Mary Collins, Mike Favreau, Lynn Lockwood, and Christine Webb.
Motion passed. And recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve five point one to five point four as attached. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Lynn. Discussion.
Yeah, we got a bunch of iPads and MacBooks on here. It's time, is it better we just sell these instead of just disposing them?
They're looking into that. We're, they're uh, to see if they're worth anything. So our understanding right now is they're not. So we're just, we were double checking that right now.
But also since they're electronics, is that going to cost us anything to dispose? That's, that's another.
Yeah, not, not to my analysis. It should be a wash. So I talked to, I actually met with Tanya Holland today about that. So she's just double checking that they're, they're not worth of anything, but they'll, they'll dispose of them the least costly way for us.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
No refurbishing and donating.
Now they're too old.
Too old, that's why.
Even if he gets something for him, I guess. Be better than just disposing them.
Yeah, we just, we looked at that possibility first and then they just said they're just, they're not even able to be re, remit, image or updated anymore. So.
Okay, any other discussion?
Amy O'Brien, Mary Collins, Mike Favreau, Lynn Lockwood, and Christine Webb.
Motion passed. Six point one, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the BOE minutes from the regular board meeting of January twentieth. Two thousand twenty-two as attached. Thank you, Mike. Which one? Okay. Thank you, Mary. Discussion.
Amy O'Brien, Mary Collins, Mike Favreau, Lynn Lockwood, and Christine Webb.
Motion passed. Oh, I just want, I was telling Tom, we have our state champions headed to Florida. I think they're already there. If I remember correctly, our cheerleaders will be competing this weekend. I want to wish them good luck. Coach Cody and Coach Bree and all the cheerleaders. Thank you for representing our school in such an incredible way. I look forward to hearing about your success and all of us, right? It's exciting. Seven point one, upon recommendation of the superintendent. A motion for consideration of executive session to discuss potential disciplinary action for student A. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Mary. Discussion.
Amy O'Brien, Mary Collins, Mike Favreau, Lynn Lockwood, and Christine Webb.
Motion passed. Okay, I hope we are not going to be taking any further action. So if you wish to stay, you're welcome. Otherwise, have a good night.